Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting for Wednesday, February 13, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael.
President.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bartel. Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
And Chairman Pill.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Having a quorum, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you sit down, if you're going to give testimony tonight either for or against anything, I will need to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand and acknowledge with a simple "I do," do you swear that your testimony tonight will be the whole truth so help you God? Thank you very much. Please have a seat. Good evening. Will you be providing testimony this evening? Pardon me? Thank you. All right. A reminder, I'd like everyone to please silence all of their cell phones and any types of electronic devices. Have those turned off. Anyone who is going to speak tonight when you approach the podium, there is a sign-in sheet here. There's also one outside. If you've signed in at either one, you're great. If you haven't, do it when you come up to the podium, please. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the minutes from the January 9, 2019, meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the minutes as second.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Lavoy. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. All righty. Is there anyone who is here tonight who would like to speak on a subject that is not on our agenda? This is our open forum time. Seeing none, we'll continue with the review of tonight's hearing procedures. So tonight, I will introduce each item on the agenda in the order that they're listed. As I'm doing that, feel free to approach the speaker's podium. I'll then open the public hearing, and we invite the presenting team at that time or individual to present the agenda item explaining their item, addressing any findings of fact and hardships as relevant. There's an overhead projector for all diagrams, as we do have a TV audience at home, and I want to just caution everyone to please speak near the speaker's area so that our home audience, which is in the thousands, can go ahead and listen to every word that you have. I'll then ask staff to offer comments. We'll ask anyone from the public after that to speak, and everybody will get a chance to speak. And I'll also have the applicant address any concerns brought up by the public. Each commissioner will then offer comments and question the applicant and/or staff. We'll have a discussion amongst the commissioners, and after that discussion, I will then close the public hearing. At the conclusion of the discussion, I'll call for a motion and a second on each agenda item. With the motion made and seconded, I'll request final commissioner comments, and then we'll proceed to a vote, which will include the findings of fact. After that, I'll instruct the applicant on the next steps. So that's the sequence we'll have tonight, and we'll move right on now to our open hearings. We'll begin with new business, item planning and zoning 19-003. A request from Rene Sturgeon regarding the property located at 13 West Quincy Street in Westmont, Illinois for the following: A, a zoning code variance to permit a reduction in the number of required parking spaces in the B1 limited business district. Good evening, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for having us. My name's Kevin Coyne. I'm an attorney with the law firm Chuahak &amp; Texan, which is located in Chicago at 30 South Wacker Drive, Suite 2600, again in Chicago, zip 60606. And I have with me my client and the petitioner, Rene Sturgeon, longtime Westmont business owner. His address is 1205 Iroquois Drive in Darian. He owns the Taco Express now located at 7 West Quincy in Westmont. And again, we are looking to move that Taco Express to 13 West Quincy, right next door to where we are tonight. We received a request that we'd have larger blown-up depictions of our floor plan and the parking lot, so you each should have those in front of you in case you wanted to reference them. A request, a fairly straightforward request tonight, we have a request for a parking variance. Right now, current Westmont code would require 15 spaces for this building to be occupied and to be used as the primarily restaurant use, seeking a variance of nine spaces to allow for six spaces to be allowable from the site. Little bit of background, my understanding is a number of you are familiar with the Taco Express. It's been there for quite some time. The building that we're looking at moving into at 13 West Quincy, which we're here to talk about tonight, has been vacant for quite some time on the bottom floor. My understanding is three to four years. There are a small residential component to it on the second floor. Two very small units are up top. We're looking, again, to move Taco Express into this space. Taco Express right now has been in Westmont's downtown for 28 years. The bulk of its clientele are not driving to the restaurant. They're already down here. Either they're commuters, or people in the neighborhood, or other customers or clients already in the downtown Westmont for one reason or another. Folks driving to the restaurant is the exception, clearly not the norm for this particular restaurant. We do have a depiction on what we're going to be doing with the site. It's going to be a total build-out of the area, so it's going to be a nice improvement to the location. Fairly modest-sized restaurant. We're looking at having about nine tables, and we're looking at six countertops along the window.
Excuse me one second.
Sure.
Maybe you could just go out and see if you could -- I'm not sure that he's turned that on yet.
Oh, it's on on my end.
You're on there, but I don't see it on any of the screens. We should see it on the TV screens.
Okay. You want me to pause for a moment?
Just give us one second.
Sure.
Thanks, Con. Okay. I don't know why I did hear that.
I heard that.
Why don't you go ahead and continue then? Thanks.
Okay. We also do have a fairly modest number of employees, ranging from five to six, there about.
Five to six, yeah. I'm downsizing.
Okay. So we're going to have a little bit smaller location. Most of these employees, too, are not driving to the space. A number of them take public transportation. Some are walking to work. We're anticipating about two of the spaces would be used by employees at any given time.
That's the -- but I --
So we don't have much use from the employees as to the parking lot. The current location, as you know, it's been there a long time. We've never had parking issues. I think that can be vouched for by staff, that we've not run into issues with the customers swallowing an inordinate number of downtown parking spaces. With respect to the parking lot, and I'll just quickly switch over, that is going to be completely resurfaced, so we'll have another improvement to your downtown there, too. It's going to be a brand-new resurfacing of the parking lot. I'll run through the elements of the parking variance. We do have a hardship. It's my understanding from talking to staff that we only have six parking spots for this building. Virtually any user, new user, is going to have to come in and get a parking variance, so I don't think this process will be avoided regardless of who the use is and who comes in before you.
And we are live now. Your picture is live.
Oh, great. Okay. A little bit more clearly there. And we do have unique circumstances. The business has been in this area for a long time. We have a dedicated clientele and customer base. We feel it'd be very damaging to the business to move it outside of Westmont's downtown, just where the clientele is used to seeing it. And the circumstances, you're aware of, the building did burn. They've been burned out, looking to get moved in next door to get up and running again. Currently on a contract to sell that property to the larger development that I'm sure you guys have heard about at length at this point. And then the final element of the variance is that we wouldn't be changing the character of the neighborhood. Obviously, we've already been right here for many years, so there wouldn't be any change to the character by our moving next door. In conclusion, I think we offer a lot with this request. We'll be filling commercial vacancy. We'll be improving the building, improving the parking lot. You're going to be able to keep this longtime business next door and in the neighborhood, servicing its dedicated customer base. And we thank your staff. They're indicating support of our project. They've been very helpful as we've moved through the process, and thank them, and thank you guys for hearing us tonight. We're here for any questions.
Great. We'll get to that in just a second. And I will officially open the public hearing, and we'll go on to staff first.
Okay.
Con, thank you.
Chairman Pill, thank you. Members of the commission, I don't have a whole lot to add in terms of the information. I think Mr. Coyne has done an excellent job giving you the background and summarizing the core issues. I think we all need to recognize what the circumstance is, and circumstance like this in every old downtown that I've worked in over the years, where occupancy of existing buildings and that occupancy trying to comply with new parking standards, those occupancies, in many cases, those tenants can no longer, could never comply with the new standards given the existing configuration of the space. And of course, we wouldn't want them to, because if they had to, then you'd imagine it would be all big parking field in the middle of your downtown. And so, like many downtowns, parking is really done in a kind of collective, if you will, on-street and within village parking lots. And so, when we deal with situations like this, now, this is a change in use from a prior use. The prior use, best as I understand it, was more retail in nature, so the parking requirement for the site would have been less, although my expectation would be that they still would not have had sufficient parking on-site. The restaurant use is a more intensive use and therefore requiring more parking, and in addition to the residential use above it. But with that in mind, and with conditions like this in many downtowns, several communities, including Westmont, have recognized and made provisions for these kinds of circumstances, and have provided a provision within the zoning code that if the variance were to be approved, the petitioner is required to pay a fee. It's called a payment in lieu of fee, to provide the ability for the village, over time, to build up a fund, to then provide parking at other locations to satisfy this need and other needs in the community. So this is not unusual, is often done, and the petitioner has agreed to comply with that requirement of the code if the commission is willing to waive the, or to accept, approve the variance for the parking. The variance would be, we determined that this site would need, with the residential uses above it, 15 spaces. They provide six on-site, so a deficiency of nine spaces, a variance of nine spaces, is requested. So with that, we have no other information to provide, and as, again, Mr. Coyne had suggested, I believe this is an appropriate application and request.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there any sound? Nothing?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this subject? Great. All righty. We'll move on to commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Lavoy, please, tonight.
Okay. I just have a few questions, really, a couple for staff. Thinking back in the history, I don't know if you were here at the time, but when the Holiday Properties came in for their proposal, this particular corner of the alley didn't meet the turning radiuses for fire truck or any kind of emergency vehicles back there. And they were going to pursue easements across properties, and this was one of them. Has the Holiday issue been worked out? Because the way they showed their fire truck radius, it came across these six spaces.
Not familiar.
Okay. That's just a --
I'd be surprised, because these are mid-block. Are we talking about the same site? Because Holiday, isn't that the --
It was a matter of them being able to --
Holiday's next door.
Okay.
You know, right in the corner here. And the back alley is where there were some concerns about both garbage trucks pulling in and out and fire vehicles, and possibly having to make a three-point turn, and possibly encroaching onto neighboring properties' private parking lot.
So if you look at the zoning, the map that was given to us, that's the exact property that they were looking at, either acquiring an easement or doing something else with the fire truck to turn the corner in the alley.
And they're vacating that portion of the alley.
Yeah. So I wonder if they're going to -- Because they're going to close the -- So, since we don't have an answer, I am planning to reach out to Holiday tomorrow regarding an agreement the village has with them, and I will ask them that question, and maybe we can get a resolve between now and the time this proceeds to the village board.
It really has nothing to do with the applicant at all. I just want to make sure that they're not counting on your land to actually turn a fire truck around in, and that's exactly where your spaces are, in the back of the building, on another whole issue.
I've been in contact, but that hasn't been raised to us.
Okay.
We talked it over on the surface. I don't know that we would have an issue with fire truck using it, but I mean, yeah.
Okay. Just a couple administrative things. One is, are you planning on doing signage on the front of the building? Would you meet the code, or?
Yeah, we're not asking for any relief from any signage.
No relief from any other code?
Yep.
Outdoor dining?
I'm sorry?
Any outdoor dining? I know you had tables out in front of the other restaurant.
Usually, outdoor, we have, just like the other Italian restaurant, they only put two chairs.
Yeah.
And if we do that, we just put two chairs.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Because there's no room.
Yeah, I want to make sure that the reason I question this is because if you needed a variation that wasn't thought of, that we can actually do something
Yeah.
with outdoor dining and the signage, if, maybe you forgot about the -- I don't want to see that have to come back, is the point.
Okay. We appreciate that.
But you can't resolve that. Tonight, it wasn't published anyway.
If there may be a table or whatever, we go in appliance with whatever's there.
Yeah.
And we had it over in Taco Express. We put one or two chairs, and that's about it.
Yeah. Just to clarify, if it's not published as a variance request, you guys can't consider it, have to get republished. As far as outdoor dining goes, if the sidewalk has sufficient width to accommodate outdoor dining, that's a request made directly, I think, to the village manager and talk about a license agreement and identification agreement, et cetera, but it's not a zoning code issue.
Okay. Has any other units in that stretch right there raised an objection at all? I didn't see anything in the package.
No, no objections have been raised.
And the last thing for staff would be, has any business in downtown in this block requested the use of the village parking lot behind this building? Because that's parking that's vacant after hours, pretty much, except for meetings.
I'll respond first. In my short time here, I'm not aware of any requests like that.
It might be beneficial to the applicant that, you know, he's close enough where staff could park, because his tenants are going to use the back spaces.
I did explore that, and my memory is, and John, maybe you can correct me, that it's not a village-owned lot.
It's not. We're working on acquiring ownership, but right now, it's a village lease for a number of spaces there.
The reason I trigger that is because, like, when I go downtown to a meeting, I end up using somebody's condo thing on one of the parking apps to, you know, gain a parking space. And since it's not being used, it could be beneficial to the applicant. I missed your food. Can't wait to get back. I'm in support of your application.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Carmichael.
Yeah, I have no objections here. I'm in support of the application as well. The parking you had at the previous location, and how many spots were there compared to this one?
The parking? Well, it's the same thing. It was six parking spaces.
Okay.
And now, it's the same thing.
That's what I assumed, but, and, yeah, I'm curious about one thing. Attorney Coyne.
Yeah.
You're with Chuahak &amp; Texan.
Yeah.
And how many years have you been with the law firm?
I've been there not that long. I'm six months in, so fairly new.
Okay. Because I noticed your name's not on the letterhead of the law firm's stationery.
I'm that new. Yeah. I'm that new. Yeah. I am now.
Okay. Good. No further questions.
No problem. Yep.
Commissioner Van Buren.
I'm also in support of the variance. You've been a very responsible and good business in Westmont, and I hope you future success. This must be very difficult for you, keeping your help. I know that your base employees are, you're going to have them back with you when you get started, and they're
They're waiting.
They're waiting, and, yeah, that must be very difficult.
You hit it. But good luck.
Thank you. Yeah.
Commissioner Thomas.
My family, we drive, pick up the order, and take it home, and I have never, ever, over the years, had to drive around, again, one time, looking for a spot. Not once. Always have pulled in, gone in, taken care of business, got my food, and left.
Thank you.
So I am in support of you staying, not only in the city or in the village, but on the block.
That's why we call it express.
That's right. And we appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck.
Commissioner Sharp.
I just had a couple of questions. Have you run this by the fire department already? Or do we know what they might expect of you when you renovate?
We've already, what we're going to be putting in, if you're getting, like, sprinklers and whatnot, that's all going to be incorporated into the build-out.
Yeah.
Okay. I had a question about how many previous spaces. That was already answered. And then just the signage, just to clarify, you are going to apply for signage in the future? Or do you have a plan for signage, for identification?
The famous, the next door, they have a canopy?
Yeah.
That's about it. We're not extending this and that. We have a canopy right now. It is, and it's Taco Express. It doesn't -- and as a matter of fact, I think we were allowed only, at that time, we were allowed maybe two feet out or whatever it is, and that was it. They limited me. Now, they, I, they overextended a little bit. But I'll go along with what the village says.
Okay. I think it'll be very nice. I can't wait for you guys to reopen. My family would have probably eaten there tonight if it was open, just because of our schedules, but, yeah. You are a staple of Westmont, so thank you for sticking with us, and I wish you luck in the new location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp. Just a couple of questions, just to clarify, and also somewhat for our home audience. This is an outright purchase, then, of that building?
For the contract purchaser. So, yeah, we will be purchasing once we get through all of our lead approvals.
And are the units upstairs occupied presently?
They are.
And is there going to be any renovation needed for those?
Maybe long-term.
Yeah, long-term. You know, we, right now, I'm, I do want to buy that building. So it's all the process, selling the other building, you know, and move it in, but it's all up on the board right now.
The immediate issue is clearly the first floor, but long-term, I think we will be improvements upstairs.
Yeah. We would probably do it.
A question or two about the actual new restaurant coming. So in the current restaurant, you know, we order at the counter.
Yeah.
And then a lot of times, the food, if it's empty, they just hand it to you, or you step over to the side and they give it to you there. Now, in looking at the drawing, I don't see a counter anymore. I see swinging doors where I would have expected the counter to be. So are you going to full-table service now?
Not, see, this was, it was just a drawing, you know, to present it, but we need a counter, you know, to collect the money and whatever.
That's what I saw.
And it would be about the same as what we had, but less tables, less everything. So, because we were limited. Over there, we had longer, than the back and all that. The way it's set up, this building's set up, we can't do that anymore. So we're limited with tables. That's why we're downsizing.
Well, I understood the front part being downsized. What I didn't understand is how the order interfacing area works, because it doesn't seem like there is one.
It's going to be, it's going to be about the same. We probably will bring you another, whatever. The same thing, it's just that the counter, we'll just put a counter or whatever.
Well, but you got doors there. You got, if you have to have the doors and you've got an oven or range top, I don't see how you do that. Because it looked like that bathroom.
Kitchen's right here, so isn't, is that it?
Yeah. See, the front is not, it's the same thing. It's just that our refrigeration and all that, we're going to go back a little bit, you know, where we will be, that doesn't take that much for a counter, you know, then if you were well aware of it. It was just, what, about 24 inches? We're not talking much.
Well, that's the width of the counter, but there's a good, you have a good six to eight feet across that counter where people order.
But
I mean, right now, I see, because you have doors. Do you see the swinging doors?
I see what you're talking about.
Doesn't that look like where the counter would go?
Normally, yes, but it looks like, I mean, from the way this is drawn, what I'm pointing at is where the orders will be taken, and then the food, I assume, is going to be brought out through the doors.
Yeah, it's going to be brought out.
Where was the food order taken? I'm sorry.
The wall here, as you can see, the
To the left of the swinging doors.
The wall, swinging doors, but we don't need that much space
Swinging doors.
to hand out the food.
Okay.
We're trying to limit, this is going to be more of a takeout, more or less.
Yeah. They don't have the footprint to have that giant
I know it's smaller. I just didn't see
Yes.
a nice defined counters area.
That's why we are downsizing.
Okay. Does that mean the menu will downsize also, or will it be relatively the same?
The menu, we probably will, a little bit, but the majority, or the most popular items, we'll keep. And there was, now, there was, it was too big of a menu, and it takes more time, more of this to prepare all that, so we're going to even downsize in the menu, too.
Okay. All right. And then finally, last question. Presuming things go well tonight, and you're in front of the village board in a relatively short time period, and that moves along, what would the estimated timeline or timeframe for this project be?
We are somewhat tied to the neighboring property, because we're going to be using the proceeds from that sale on this one. So once that deal closes, we'll be closing on this one, assuming we've gotten all of our approvals out of the way. So it seems like they're pretty far along, so we'd be hopeful that we're closing in March and starting very soon thereafter.
Yes. It all depends on the sale.
Yeah.
And naturally, the money that goes there will go to this new project.
Because I would assume one of your goals is to be open for the taste of Westmont, I would think.
Yeah. That's my goal.
If that's possible, yeah, that would be a tight one.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Anyone else in the public who has anything to say? We'll close the public hearing. We will go ahead then, and I will entertain a motion for new business planning and zoning item 19-003, a quest, request from Renee Sturgeon regarding the property located at 13 West Quincy for the following: A, a zoning code variance to permit a reduction in the number of required parking spaces in the B1 limited business district.
So...
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Thomas. Are there any comments, questions on the motion? I would just like to also indicate that this motion will include the findings of fact that were, um, handed out to everyone beforehand. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. So you have our approval and we certainly wish you luck. Um, that is a recommendation that will go on to the village board and staff will contact you and let you know when you'll appear at a Thursday night village board meeting. We wish you the best of luck. I'm gonna see you out there for the taste.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night. All right, continuing on now with new business planning and zoning item 19-004, a request from the village of Westmont regarding the following proposed zoning ordinance text amendments: A, a text amendment to Appendix A, Section 11.07, ground signs of the zoning ordinance to permit the addition of freestanding wayfinding signs in the Office Research zoning district; and B, a text amendment to Appendix A, Section 11.11, exemptions of the zoning ordinance to increase the size of directional signs in the Office Research or OR zoning district. I assume we'll hear from staff on this?
Yes. Chairman Pill, the staff will kick this one off, um, and I will provide the background, since this is a village-initiated text amendment. Uh, the background to the project is, and we have representatives tonight from two groups, one CBRB, CBR-E, Real Estate Development Management Company, uh, who approached us several months ago with their, um, sign company, Doyle Signs, represented by John Sheets and Jim Doyle, not any relationship between the two, as I understand it, representing CBRB, uh, came to us with what we thought was a, 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 a very attractive, well-done proposal to upgrade the image, the branding of the Executive Place office development up on Pasquenelli Drive north of Ogden Avenue. Suffice it to say, we all liked it, found out later, many of the signs couldn't be actually implemented as proposed, because the ordinance that was just recently updated, in my opinion, quite frankly, I think just overs, overlooked what I have seen in many other developments, maybe you've seen as well as similar office parks, we've given you some examples in the staff report, uh, the Doyle Sign was very helpful in that regard as well, uh, for what is really the contemporary, uh, kind of signage package that a lot of these new projects are doing. So we thought it was a sleek design, uh, well-done, and, uh, and felt that it needed, uh, needed to be, uh, to move forward, obviously it needed to, to, to be addressed via a text amendment. They could have, by the way, uh, for the three sites that they had come before us, uh, Saudi variance, but my thought was at that time, uh, you know, this is not a unique hardship, this hardship exists for every potential site and at least every potential multi-tenant site within the OR district, and then I've also given you a map in the report that gives you a sense of how many sites within the village would actually be subject to this requirement. And again, remember that these, really, this issue tends to come up for multi-tenant developments, not single-user developments. So again, even being further limited in the number of sites in the village, again, there's two office research districts, OR and then what's called OR1, and the map describes those. So it's a very limited area of the community for which this proposed amendment would apply. It does not apply to all commercial uses, it does not apply to multi-tenant shopping centers, so forth, just uniquely to the OR district. So with that in mind, uh, we actually placed the burden on Doyle Signs and CBR-B to come back with a proposal, uh, and tell us what they thought would make sense and, and something that they would, could live with, and ultimately, in our review of their proposal, something we could live with. And we came to, uh, if you will, a decision, uh, and the proposal before you, um, addresses several potential changes, uh, to the ordinance. One, it makes it clear that multi-tenant signs, uh, or multi-tenant developments in the OR are allowed, uh, with, to have more than one ground sign. And we had to, in addition to that, establish the fact that we needed to create a new sign category, uh, that distinguished, uh, what's now called a freestanding wayfinding sign from what the ordinance currently allows as very small directional signs, basically with arrows in and out pointing, you know, the way to circulate through the property. Uh, and, and in that regard, even that sign was deemed to be actually too small for their needs. So two fundamental proposals before you, one, the creation of a new sign category with new set of standards. We also asked the Doyle Sign, uh, group to come, and in your packet you'll see the three applications for three separate sites and an example of what the signs would look like on those sites, to give you a sense of what the proposal would look like in reality rather than just conceptually. Uh, and then also increasing for the OR district, the size of the directional signs, again, because the size was just simply too limited, particularly for multi-tenant developments. So those are the proposals before you, that's the background on the project in, in very simple terms. I've also provided in your packet, uh, well, I also wanna make it clear, by the way, that the proposed wayfinding signs are not, they are not additional signs that would be out in what we typically see in the parkway, you know, the project identification signs, naming the, the project or the business if it's a private, if it's a single business. Now, these really are, are properties are set back, at least a minimum of 25 feet from the property line at the entrance, and then set back internally, and you've seen the drawings, to give direction for people coming to, you know, uh, visit, uh, different business locations within multi-tenant projects. So again, it's internal, uh, it's not gonna add sign clutter, if you will, or really dramatically change that image from the street, uh, if you will, so the fact they're smaller, that they're set back, will really not be a substantial impact on the overall image quality character of the neighborhood or, or the development either. Um, we also gave you a couple limited, uh, really, uh, Doyle Signs, uh, submitted to us some examples that we included, and I summarized in the report of other communities how they handle, uh, similar signs of the three communities that you find, we have similar signs that are allowed in Westchester and also in Bloomingdale Oakbrook as, uh, more restrictive standards for directional signs, more similar to ours, probably where ours came from. Uh, and, uh, and they deal mostly with wayfinding, but most, most projects in, uh, Oakbrook are, uh, are approved through a planned unit development process, and they, you know, they, through the PUD process, they have special standards applied to each PUD, special sign packages and so forth, so, uh, it really doesn't apply. So with that, we felt, again, uh, you know, it was generally consistent with, you might call somewhat the norm, of what at least a number of limited communities we looked at, and my guess would be, if you did more extensive research, you'd find something similar, but the bottom line is, anytime I do this, while it's always instructive to look at your neighbor, it shouldn't be the rule. You should decide what you want, what the character is, what's appropriate, and again, you know, the, the, the big picture is, we're, we're, CBR-B is coming to us to enhance the marketability of our site, of their, their sites, their projects, enhance the marketability of their tenant spaces. Bottom line is, why would we stand in the way of that? Unless it was egregious, right? We wanna make sure that they're successful, and if the way that they do that is improving their signs, and in my opinion, in fact, ending up with better, higher-quality signs, rebranding and that better markets their tenant space, we, we win, the village wins, they win, and so there was really no reason in my mind, I thought this, they've always been very reasonable, very helpful in their approach, uh, and that's why, uh, with their assistance, we felt that this was an appropriate amendment and are recommending these changes. So with that, I would introduce Jim Doyle or John Sheets for the sign company. Gentlemen, if you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah. Good evening, gentlemen, and you have signed in, I take it? I have not, I will right now.
That'd be great, and you signed in outside?
I did, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, apologize about that. Thank you for having us. I'm Jim Doyle with CBR-E, office dot of 700 Commerce in Oakbrook, Illinois. Today, I am here representing the owner at the properties Executive Place 1, Executive Place 2, Executive Place 3, and Quill Ridge. Today, we are discussing the sign amendment as Khan said at Executive Place 1, 2, and 3. Some background, from my company, we've been, you know, new ownership took over and CBR-E was hired in 2017 to not only turn these properties around, because they were neglected, they weren't properly being upgraded and fixed, um, so we have ultimately, you know, our goal is to upgrade these properties, get tenants signed, sign leases for tenants moved in, and, um, ultimately get more businesses, and these businesses park, generate more revenue for us and the village of Westmont as well. John Streets with Doyle Signs is here, he's kinda, kinda going to more of the technical, um, issues of the signs and our overall vision for what we wanted these three properties.
Thank you, Jim. My name is John Streets, I'm with Doyle Signs, uh, and I just wanna run through the, the overall proposal, uh, talk about why it's important, to why I think this text amendment will really assist not only this property, but other properties like it in the, in Westmont. I put out the three, uh, major sign types that this text, these text amendments will apply to. Uh, you know, there's one other sign type that we're proposing for this that I don't have on the projector screen right now, and that's the main identification for the entire development known as Executive Place. Uh, this sign right here, uh, that is sign type 3, and that's more the wayfinding sign that we're trying to get approval for. That's gonna be a sign type that's set inside the property, that's gonna basically offer any traffic that comes in, some wayfinding on how to get to those particular tenants within that building. Uh, this sign type right here is sign type 4, and that's more of a directional sign. It's a little bigger and different than what, uh, your typical code would allow, but it allows for some graphics that, uh, direct people to the delivery dock or to specific addresses, uh, and fits within the style of the branding of the, the wayfinding signs that we're proposing. The last sign type that we're proposing is this one right here, and it's, uh, sign number 2. That would be identification for each of the individual buildings within Executive Place, and so there's a total of three of those being proposed between the three properties, uh, one at 777 Oakmont Lane, one at 1010 Executive Court, and one at 1111 Pasquenelli Without these text amendments, we would have to go in for variance for these signs, but I believe these signs are, are well-designed and well-sized for a property of this unique nature. There's many, many tenants across the three different, uh, addresses, and the, the parking kinda weaves in and out, and it's very important to direct traffic in a safe manner, and it's also important to have a nice, uh, branding for those wayfinding signs. But that said, I, I don't wanna extend over my three-minute allowance, uh, so I would like to answer any questions, uh, everyone has.
Before we get to questions, Bruce, did you wanna say anything, or are you...
Just that Khan worked with the applicants and did a great job, and really, he's the most knowledgeable about this request and the proposed revision.
Great, great. John, any comments?
Uh, I may have a few questions for Khan once we get into a discussion, but, uh, nothing specific.
Sounds good, okay. Um, great. Um, so, opening the public hearing, is there, uh, anyone, I think you declined already, but you're our only, only public person, you have every seat to yourself, so you're good to go. All right, that sounds great. All right, well then we'll move on to commissioners, and we'll begin with Commissioner Carmichael.
Good evening, gentlemen. Yeah, I, I think this is a, it makes, makes sense, it's a plus-plus, uh, it's, it's, I should've just fine-tuning the, our new signage code, updating it, making it a, a little better, and it makes a lot more sense than, uh, having endless variances, uh, project after project. I, I like it, and I'd, I'd like a special thanks to Khan, uh, for staff, that you, giving this comparative research was helpful to me, and, uh, professional package you gentlemen have submitted, I'm very impressed in, uh, CBR-E and Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm supportive, and I have no specific questions. I'll pass it on.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I feel the same. It's been, uh, well-researched and compared to other people who have similar circumstances, and, uh, it helps us, it helps you, good for us, also, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas?
Uh, I, I agree, um, it makes sense to, once you get past the street and the main sign that says, "Business B is over here," once you get in the massive parking lot and there are more than one tenant, you know, you're looking around, lost, and, uh, they're good-looking signs, they, they're, they're informative, and they're, they're, they do what they're supposed to do, and I support it. Nice job, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Hi, I just have a couple of questions about, um, the, let's start with the site plan for 1010 Executive Court. I just had a question on one or two of these signs. Sign number one, that's to the bottom right along Kingory, there's an existing monument sign that's kind of low horizontally oriented that's to be removed, and then when I look at sign number one proposed, it's 14 and a half feet tall, so my question is, what, what type does that, is that being proposed to fit in? Is that a wayfinding sign? Because the text amendment is to limit the height to 10 feet.
Sign type 1 is the one we're talking about, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, that is a, uh, identification for the entire development, and based on the code, that actually was an approvable sign.
Okay.
Uh, so there's no issues with that sign, size, placement, or the graphics on it.
So that's neither one of these types that we're talking about tonight?
Correct. Yeah, I didn't include it in that original display, just because it wasn't one of the problematic signs of the, of the package.
Okay. Uh, my other question is to staff regarding the leasing sign that, uh, it looks to be a temporary sign north of that.
Which, which one are you referring to?
Uh, on that same site plan, on the north end of that site.
10, V-shaped leasing sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's also existing and permitted by code.
As a turn, as a permanent sign? Would that be, do you know, off, off your cuff, would it be permitted as a new construction?
Yeah, we allow for leasing signs like that.
Just to stay up indefinitely? I think that might be our next tweak. That, that sign is not pretty.
I would not disagree, but that's my understanding of what the sign code would allow. And I did look at that, that was one of the first things I also saw, and raised some, in my own mind, some questions about it, but...
Yeah, I mean, it just looks like a temporary sign.
Yes.
It's not, this is not about you, you know, the applicant, this is just next, the next code amendment, 2.3.0, just a suggestion, but yeah.
Just as a follow-up question, I'll make a note, and I'm keeping a running list of items for staff to research and come back with some suggested text amendments. Would you suggest maybe a time limit, like three months or six months?
I think, yeah, time limits on, on construction of that nature, I mean, it looks like it's wood posts with plywood, so I, I wouldn't consider that permanent material suitable. And I also don't think, you know, we don't, we no longer allow pole-mounted signs, and to me, a three-legged V-shaped sign is, is conceptually a pole-mounted sign, there's no base to it, so that's my two thoughts.
I can just make a recommendation, uh, the style of that, a sign of that style usually is up for about a year? In most scenarios, you could request something like a renewal permit, uh, subject to staff's, uh, review of it, making sure it's still in good condition. That, as a sign contractor, that's what I would recommend?
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with that, I mean, there is, cause I think each situation might be unique in terms of the tenant's needs and their visibility, just, you know, circulation patterns around them, so I can see that, but I've, I've said my piece. Other than that, I think this sign package is great, uh, I do appreciate the, the constant review that, that you guys can provide to our code, and I wish you, CBR-E, the best of luck in redeveloping and getting tenants into these buildings.
Thank you. Commissioner LaVoy, please.
Yes, I only have a few questions, one for staff, uh, has fire looked at this? And the reason I ask that question is because we're taking away the monument signs, and when responding to a location like this, uh, they're gonna be hunting for the change, and just wanna make sure that, uh, that they're aware that this is going down, so...
I can, I'll share a copy of this information with the fire department.
You know what I mean, like, if they're going to this, that dislocation, they're gonna be looking for that monument, the big sign that used to be there for the address, that's not gonna be there now, and also, Oakbrook responds to Pasquenelli normally, so it's a joint response from Oakbrook and Westmont. So that would be one thing.
No, I don't think so. I, I think if there's a mutual aid call due to a big call, then many communities can, can respond, but...
Yeah, up to 20, I remember when the Maze Lake, there was...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to avoid the situation, John, where they, which building was it? Now, the sign used to be there, and now it's not, kinda thing.
Well, they have the right to change their signage.
Sure.
As long as it complies with codes.
Yeah.
John, can you clarify, you're not, on sign one, you're not getting rid of that permanently, you're just replacing it?
Sign one at 1010, that's being replaced.
Yeah, so, so these aren't, yeah, one and two, I, yeah, they're just being, it's being removed and replaced with a new one.
See, yeah.
Yeah. And all the signs have the address on them, that's required by code. So any new sign, so there's not gonna be... So any new sign, so there's not going to be a diminishment of.
Okay.
Addressing, or?
I thought it was a good question.
Yeah. No, I said, thanks for bringing that up, but.
Yeah. The other thing is, is that with the changes of the sign, it appears that some of these are going to have conflicts with some of the landscaping that's there, like trees and islands and that kind of thing, and like on number three on 1010, there may be a conflict with some landscaping, and are, are you proposing to do any landscaping in association with the, the changes of the signs at all?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
As required by code.
Yeah.
There will be new, new landscaping.
I didn't see that, so it's something I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, this was, they, this is not their full, ultimately, their full sign package.
Uh-huh.
This is just provided for information for purposes of this amendment.
You know, I read it, though.
Good. But yeah, they, they will be required to submit a landscape plan, as they have done in other sites in this office park.
All right, another, just a couple of little questions that I noticed when I was looking at the signs over there is the size of the letters. Sometimes they're a little too small, maybe that's because I'm getting old, but the size of the letters are less than, less than the six inches on those panels on sign three A. Maybe they should be a little bigger, I don't know. But it's a very nice package, by the way, but, and also how it's illuminated. It's internal, so LED, solar, is it solar?
Not solar.
No?
Not yet, anyway. No, it'll be illuminated with LED illumination on the inside of the signs.
Yeah, it'll look very nice, yeah. Rather than a light shining up at it, it's a real nice design, like it very much, and I'm all in favor.
John, can you speak to this letter size? I don't think the, our ordinance has any minimum size.
You know what, I think it should, because, you know, things get too small and walk close together, and it's a blur.
So the, the overall, we're talking about sign three, I believe, and the overall size of those panel sections is six inches tall.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Oh. No, I don't have the exact dimension of that copy on there, but I would estimate it's about four inches tall. You know, these are intended to be seen while you're driving, and no one's driving through that parking lot at like sixty miles an hour.
Yes, just going real slow.
Yeah, hopefully, and.
Well, part of the blur, I think, is, is how close they are together, you know, and you have room to separate them a little more, and it might be a comment, but I'm not complaining at all about the package. Other, the, up on the screen, you can see that there's a big distance between the address on the bottom and all the individual strip signs. May have some room to widen it up a little bit, maybe the gap is, you know, would.
Sure, and that, that's really not going to affect the overall area of that sign at all, since your code would normally count the overall height times the overall width anyway.
Yeah.
So if that would be a requirement.
It's not.
To open up space a little bit, we could.
It's not, it's just a, you know, one of those things that, you know, I just picked up on, that I notice when I look at a sign, it's all a blur, kind of thing, but everything is good. I like it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to go back to that V-shaped sign for a second. So, is the intent of that to advertise that there is space available?
So I think you're referring to the CBRE brokerage sign is the for lease sign that has the broker, the two brokers and the assistant broker, so yes, that would be, that would be an advertisement from CBRE.
And do you have any idea how long that sign's been up?
I don't know how long, I don't know the duration, how long it's been up, I don't, not sure how long it intends to be up.
And would, would you assume, would I assume then, that there's space available there? That's why the sign is up?
Yes.
Because I don't remember the sign ever not being up.
Correct.
So, you know, I think one, which whoever brought that up, it was Commissioner Sharp, it's a great point, because, you know, when does it go from a temporary leasing sign to a permanent sign? And certainly, this one spans years.
At least to May 2017, when CBRE took over.
I think someone else had a sign there before that.
Okay.
So I, I don't ever remember there not being a sign, I mean, I'm not looking to lease, so I sort of just shoot on by.
Right, right.
But I've seen a sign there for pretty much forever. So I do think we should take a look at how that should be done, how that should be addressed. I totally agree with Commissioner Sharp on that. I don't think there's any point in doing anything with it right now with you guys, but I think our staff should take a look at that.
Well, there, at any given time, nobody has a hundred percent occupancy, so there's always lease space available, so you want to be able to have that be known, but then the question is, should that be on a temporary sign, or should that be, that be expressed on a permanent sign?
Right. That's, that is a question, and I do think you could have hundred percent. You, I'm sure you have facilities that have a hundred percent.
There are some, there are, there are some, those are very lucky tenants or property owners.
And Quail Ridge is one of your properties also?
Correct, that is the, the property just north of.
I am very familiar with it, and is there, that's not a hundred percent right now, right?
No, it is not.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, the other idea just occurred to me, and that maybe that information that's on that V-shaped sign could be incorporated into the larger project identification sign.
Yeah.
And if it's, if there's leasing available for a prolonged time, it might outlast the sign. So if, we might have to look at whether the sign needs to be replaced, if there's still leasing space available, if, if it's been there for, if the availability has been for so long, it might have outlasted the sign, replaced the sign, so it's, it's.
Well, I think Mr. Street's had an excellent point where there could be a one-year, or you could start with a two-year with one-year renewables, and you could take a look at it at that point, which would then just encourage someone to go ahead and make sure that it presents well to, I mean, it's a fairly heavy flow of traffic on Route eighty-three, and in the interest of, that is one of the nice areas in our town, one of the nicest areas. It's a beautiful office research corridor, and so you want to make sure that everything looks good. These are some vast improvements in signage, so you hate to have one stand out that looks so different from all the nice stuff you're doing. You're getting a great project across the street there on the pond, that's going to be a big one, Class A office space coming to town. So, you know, it's important that, that we keep, we, we continue in the direction of making that as, as improved across the entire expanse as we can. My point. John, did we trigger any questions at this point now?
I do have some questions, not about what, you know, is proposed for that specific development or developments, but for the language of the text itself. Khan, can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yeah.
This is proposed for the OR Office Research District only.
Yeah.
These signs, which makes sense, because that's the district where we have these larger multi-tenant-type developments, oftentimes with multiple buildings on a single site. There could be situations, so it comes to mind was the newly approved development at Sixty-third and Cass, where although it's a subdivided lot, it's at least currently under common ownership, you have two kind of principal buildings and outlots and a connection to the neighboring property, which is the Mariano's, they may come in and say, you know, some directional signage to point people to the LA Fitness or a movie theater or something beyond the main monument sign by the road might be necessary. Was there any consideration to whether this would be prudent in any other zoning districts?
No, is the direct answer, although I had given that very brief thought.
Yeah.
And I just don't see that in, in any of the other bigger projects that I've worked in, like Sixty-third and Cass. It's just not common in retail centers, because you usually get the big box retail with the big sign on the facade. You get, in the case of Sixty-third and Cass, big identification signs with multi-tenant descriptions of who's in the center. You can clearly see them from the street. In this case, these office, you know, you're dealing with small office spaces, small users in the most, for the most part. In many cases, they're hidden behind a building, by, you know, hidden behind Pasquenelli, you know, so that's why it just seems more logical, but if someone wanted to come with a proposal, you know, I, I think it would be interesting to consider, but I, I don't think it's quite the norm that I've seen in office parks.
I would agree. I, I just wanted to ask a question, and I imagine someone can apply for a variance if they're in a different zoning district.
Exactly.
And process it that way.
Right.
So because this falls under the ground sign section, presumably, these would have to be ground signs as opposed to any sort of pole signs.
Yes.
Which is good. There is a landscaping requirement for all ground signs, and I'm wondering if we should include language, like, what if they have just, if it's a directional signage that may not necessarily mention a specific tenant and be a larger sign, but just like, is a sign with an arrow or something? Is landscaping required, or is that something where we want to give staff some discretion to weigh the landscaping requirement in certain circumstances? Or there may be enough surrounding landscaping where deemed unnecessary?
Yeah, actually, directional signage is in the form of exempt sign, doesn't even need a permit, no landscaping, no whatever. It's a very simple sign, usually, you know, small, small limited square footage. That's where it's placed now and what we had proposed to do, so it wouldn't require any special.
Okay.
Landscaping or whatever.
And I'm, I'm looking at.
Yep.
The staff report where it says, it's underlined freestanding wayfinding sign, and you kind of have the layout what it is. At the end of the first paragraph, it talks about with approval of a building permit, and I think that should say signed permit.
Yeah, you're right.
And then on the next page, under number three, where it talks about signs can obstruct the engineered site or corner vision triangles, it says for public roadways, but since many of these are placed in the interior of a property, we're dealing with private drives and lanes, so I think we should also include private drives along with public roadways. The, yes, sir?
A quick question, maybe the sign company representative could address it. I agree with the idea of protecting a visibility triangle, but I just wonder if in these parking lots where, you know, they're, they're not all right angles, and there's twists and turns, and you're trying to place these signs internal to the site in islands at the end of parking rows, would a, would a twenty-five-foot visibility triangle be problematic?
Extremely, yes. I think when this was, when I drafted this text originally, I was trying to mimic as much of the existing code as possible. I would recommend modifying that text a little bit to allow for the fact that most of these directionals and wayfinding signs are going to go in an area that might be limited if you try to accommodate that kind of a site triangle or visibility triangle.
So something along the lines of, they may be permitted in that line of sight triangle, provided they don't obstruct traffic? Like, if you have a low-lying sign and cars can see around it, it's not a problem. If you have a full ten-foot, you know, take up the full maximum allowed sign, put it right on the corner, it might create a traffic problem.
Correct, and I, I would think that it's some, that is something that staff can probably have the discretion to determine in reviewing the site plan and the size.
All right, let's talk about the practical application of that idea. Just take a look at 1010, for instance. Signs four A and three are really the signs we're talking about. The one, two would be set back minimum at twenty-five feet if it's not a project identification sign, if it's a wayfinding. So first of all, that's way outside, so there's no issue from the main road. Then you get into the question, where are the property lines, and where would you take measurements to determine what the site triangle is internal to the site, because there is none. So practically, I don't, I, I just, there's no way to implement something like that. I think what we, I mean, traffic's moving slowly, it's a parking lot. You know, this is not cars going thirty and forty miles an hour for which, you know, you have to.
No, it's, it's more like where there's a stop sign at a, at a corner, even in an interior drive aisle, if there's a sign right there in the corner, it may be difficult to see cars coming, so maybe, I, I agree with you, I think it may be something where it's staff discretion to determine whether the line of sight is obstructed based on the location and size of the sign, and staff had the right to, to require modifications.
Right, and I think that's good, particularly because every single one of these sites is going to be unique to any other site, and you're going to have all sorts of different angles and drives and sidewalks and landscaping beds and you name it. So I see this being staff discretion being the best situation for this type of sign.
And then my last question on, in that same section, number four, talks about what wayfinding signs can display, and it says tenant names, addresses, directional symbols, and architectural elements associated with the development. I didn't know what was meant by architectural elements. Like, are they saying dormer ahead, or is it something that I don't quite understand?
Well, the architectural elements, John, you could correct me, but my interpretation would be if you look at 1010, which I don't know if you want to put that back up on the screen, but these elements that are the bands that extend off the face of the sign, they're raised, they extend off, they identify each of the tenants, those would be, in my opinion, what are the architectural elements, things placed onto the sign.
Okay, so you're talking about the sign itself, not what the sign is advertising?
Yes.
Because here it's.
Well, the architectural elements are things that are placed onto the sign.
And architectural elements of the sign, got it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
Now, that's my interpretation, I don't know if that's what John had envisioned, but that's, I.
Okay, that makes sense, then. And then my only other question related to that is, with what's listed there, tenant names, addresses, directional symbols, is that, I mean, that's limited, like, there can't be any other information on these wayfinding signs other than that? Is that a sufficient and comprehensive list?
This is, well, we collectively felt was appropriate, so I'm assuming it's okay.
Right, yeah, the overall goal would be your drive, and you see the monument sign, you know, seven-seven-seven, this is where I'm supposed to be, Poland, I'm for Dr. John Doe, John Doe, take a left, now John Doe, suite four fifteen, four fifteen straight at Vergon, four fifteen left, so the ultimate sign would be.
Understand, just wondering if there's any other directional wayfinding type of sign besides identifying a tenant that, or an arrow that might be added to this list?
I can see a scenario, first, I like very tightly written and pretty restrictive sign rules, so I like how it's written, but I can see a scenario where someone would want an exemption or a variance from what is written, if one of the tenants in your office building is the, is a corporate office for McDonald's, and they want a McDonald's logo. Well, a strict reading of this, you can have the name, address, symbols, and architectural elements, but we wouldn't allow a big red square with a yellow M in it, and I could see a tenant, you know, back office for McDonald's wanting their logo on there. So I guess the question is, do we want to say no? You can just have the word McDonald's and suite two oh two, or do we want to say you could have McDonald's and a logo in suite two oh two?
Maybe you should change tenant name to tenant identification. That would allow something like.
That's a great idea.
Or tenant names, tenant logos, addresses, directional symbols, and development themes, logos, and name. I'm not sure how the final wording got into the staff report, but just adding tenant logos in there somewhere in that line, I think, would satisfy that item that I missed. You know, when I, when I modeled this, it was based off of the signs we were trying to get here and also existing code, and I'm not sure the code actually calls out logos in, when it's calling out graphics for certain signs, but I honestly, I could have missed that, so.
No, I don't think it uniquely does, it just speaks to the overall sign area, and if a logo's part of the, of the sign, then the logo's considered as a part of the overall sign area. It doesn't make a distinction about having a logo or not, not having a logo.
So maybe we just add logos or just limit it to tenant identification, solve that problem?
Yep.
That's, that's all I had about the text.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I will close the public hearing then, and we'll, moving ahead, I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item nineteen dash zero zero four, question to the Village of Westmont regarding the following proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. Item A, text amendment to Appendix A, Section eleven point oh seven, ground signs of the zoning ordinance to permit the addition of freestanding wayfinding signs in the OR Office Research zoning district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Sharp. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I just wanted to add, is it necessary for us to include? Yes, I just wanted to add, is it necessary for us to include John's recommendations in this vote?
My recommendation is that they're captured in the minutes, and it's nothing that changes anything of notable substance. I think we can tweak the language based on the discussion.
Without putting in the motion.
Without putting in the motion, yeah.
But it would be covered under A as opposed to B. I agree with you on that, Chris, yes. Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill.
Yes. Entertain a motion for item B, a text amendment to the Appendix A, Section 11.11, exemptions of the zoning ordinance to increase the size of directional signs in the OR Office Research Zoning District.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmichael, second by Commissioner Van Buren. Comments or discussion on the motion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill.
Yes. Okay, gentlemen, as well as staff, you have our recommendation, and this will obviously have a couple of words tweaked here based on the minutes, and we'll move on to the village board, at which time I'm sure you guys will be in contact, so that they'll know exactly when this can happen. Good luck, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Staff, do we have anything else?
I've got a couple items. One, as long as we're just wrapping up this discussion, this is a procedural question for John more than anyone. So there were some tweaks made to the suggested language. Do you incorporate those into whatever gets sent to the village board, or is that something CD staff needs to do and get to you?
I, I propose that I'll draft the ordinance, and if there's any tweaked language, I think at least there's one or two items, I'll send it to you guys first, before it gets sent to the board.
But you'll initiate that, and you're not waiting for us to get you something. I just wanted to make sure. Two other quick updates before we adjourn. The March agenda is looking pretty full. I think we've got four items that will probably end up on the agenda. Some of you may be familiar with a proposal. It went for review in front of the Economic Development Committee a couple of weeks ago. This would be for a medical building on Ogden Avenue in the 300 block. They would want to consolidate some parcels, rezone one of them, and then get approval for site and landscaping for a possible medical building. Second item, Burger King, which was reviewed last month, and you guys recommended approval with a condition that a pole sign be removed. That goes to the village board tomorrow. The owner of the Burger King has circled back and said, as long as that pole sign's coming down, I'd like some additional signage on the building, which requires a variance. So they're going through the process to make that request. That will be in front of you in March. There's an apartment building that wants to make some revisions to their landscaping, I believe, that will require you to review and approve a landscape plan. And then lastly, there's a single-family house that wants a fence in the front yard that's taller than we allow, and so they're going to be requesting a variation for taller fence in the front. So just a heads up that those are on the way. And then last item from me is an update, just to keep you all apprised about staffing. Joe Hennerfind left in the fall, and I began in, at the very end of November, and we've been, or very, end of October, I'm sorry, and pretty much began immediately trying to find a permanent replacement for Joe to be the village's planner. Khan deserves a tremendous amount of credit, and, and thanks, for me especially. He's doing a great job as a consultant planner. Sometime, I can explain all the work that planners do in a given week with inquiries and research and calls and helping the public, and Khan is doing all of that, plus the work you see for these meetings. So kudos to Khan. But the long-term plan is to have a permanent, full-time village planner onboard, and that process is moving forward. Hopefully, the person that we've identified, after the background check process is done, can be onboard in the next couple of weeks or month at the latest. So that's in process, it's slower than I wish, but it is moving.
Great, thank you. And just to be very specific, that March meeting is on March 13th, be followed by April 10th meeting. I want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day, and good day to wear your I Love Westmont pins with a heart. Also, just to let our audience at home know, Race to the Flag, our 5K race here in the village, which this year is on Memorial Sunday, May 26th, has a special signup offer, which goes till midnight tomorrow night. So if you walk or run in our 5K race, which supports the People's Resource Center, you may want to go to racetotheflag.org and sign up in the next, oh, looks like you got about 28 hours or so, didn't catch the special. And finally, I'd like to just make an announcement, too, that Westmont will be hosting the Third Annual Restaurant Week, and that will take place from February 28th, which is a Thursday, through Sunday, March 10th. We have 35 restaurants, which is a new record for us, signed up, and I think 31 of those menus are live at westmontchamber.com. Click on the Restaurant Week logo, and we hope to also have a featured spot on ABC7 during the 11 o'clock news hour on Thursday, February 28th. Anyone else have questions?
And who would be on that televised noon hour? Would, anybody we know?
I haven't received any calls.
I don't know who it might be, but certainly a handsome and well-fed individual, I'm sure.
I'm busy.
I understand, we've, you, we had a handout, and we'll get a follow-up email from you regarding that. But one thing I would personally like to see is that you continue to give us updates on what happens to the things after we've, we've acted them on, on them here, if we can get a, not, you know, if there's not a whole lot happening, not so much, but I mean, it's nice to know what happens after Sharp leaves his.
Great. All righty, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.